I'd like to go ahead and call to order the regular meeting for the Maricopa City Council on Tuesday, February 19th, 2013. We'd like to, if you'd all stand, for an invocation by Jim Reeves, after which we'd like to ask Chief Brennan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Father, we come before you tonight not out of just fun for you or just because we have to. We come before you tonight because we need you. We ask for your presence, we ask for your guidance, and as for special nodding and worship upon our councils alike, I want to thank you for the many hours that they sacrificed on our behalf, and I just ask that the blending of their experiences-
As their preferences and their ideals, Father, we'll come together to make excellent decisions for the future of our city. Again, we always want to lift up our staff too and our employees. Thank you for each of them and their families, and for their protection, their fulfillment, and their well-being. So we give you this meeting tonight, Father, and ask it in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Placetuation's-
To the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic where its plans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim, Chief Brennan. Go ahead and move to the roll call, please.
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi.
Here.
Councilmember Kimball.
Here.
Councilmember Potter.
Present.
Vice Mayor Farrell.
Here.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Motion, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Move on to proclamation, knowledge, and awards. I don't believe we have any tonight. Moving on to item four, the report from the mayor. Have a couple of things to go over. First is wanted to let each of you know that we are having a zoning code rewrite task force that is meeting. The public is welcome to attend. That meeting will be held on Monday, March 4th, at 6:00 PM in this building, right here, Maricopa Unified School District, and would like you each to view to attend. This gives you the opportunity to learn more about, you know, the zoning code rewrite as a whole, and also have your input and be heard, which will eventually get put into a plan and come before council, so we'd encourage you to participate. So again, that's on Monday, March 4th, at 6:00 PM in this building. Great. At this time, I'll also move on to 2013. Here is, there's a passport day on Saturday, March 9th, at 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, at the City Hall, 45145 West Madison Avenue. The city is hosting a special passport event on Saturday, March 9th, from 10:00 AM till 3:00 PM, as I said, and you'll be able to provide passport information to the citizens and to accept passport applications. City is joining with the Department of State in celebrating this national outreach event. Also, there's another meeting being held this week, tomorrow in fact, Penal County East-West Corridor Meeting, which is again set for Sep. 20th. It's going to be held here in this building from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And again, this is for the East-West Corridor Meeting, and we'd encourage you to attend to learn more about that. So, aside from that, the other stuff that I would have to tell you, one of the things that I asked to happen tonight and is on the agenda, is I ask for our state representatives to be able to be here and attend, especially as we move forward with this TPT bill. Just so that you're quickly aware, the TPT is the Transaction Privilege Tax, and it basically is what funds us in a lot of ways. We've been working very closely with our representatives. I've asked you before and continue to do so, to contact your state representatives and state senators, let them know that, you know, we're very opposed as a city to the construction sales tax portion of this bill, as well as the auditing function. Without going into too much depth on it, I know that Adam Quasman is on his way here tonight, Representative Quasman, and I received a note earlier today that Representative Steve Smith would not be able to make it. So, if you can bear with me on that, I appreciate it, and I think you'll find that very interesting tonight, later on the agenda. I'm going to move right into the report from the city manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have no report this evening.
Great. Thank you very much. Going to move to call to the public. This is your opportunity to approach the city council and address us with whatever, and you have between three to five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening as we get ready for salsa festival. So, March 23rd is our salsa festival. This year, we have extended the hours to be from 2:00 to 9:00. So, that just makes the crowd maybe a little bit less intense, but we're hoping that everybody comes out in great numbers, but we should be able to handle the crowd a little bit better with the extended hours. Some of the opportunities that we have at salsa festival this year are the traditional salsa contest. We have added a professional category in which we can have restaurants in the community feature their salsa in their restaurants Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday leading up to salsa festival, so they can have a display in their restaurant, and you can go around to all the participating restaurants and try their salsa and vote on it. And then they are bringing additional salsa to the event, so they're bringing between 10 and 15 gallons of salsa to the event as a professional category. So that's something new that we're bringing and trying to get folks to go out into the community and try salsa in those restaurants that maybe they haven't attended before. So, headquarters, are we in? Edward, in? Yes? Good. Okay. So, we have Ultra Star has committed to that, Southern Dunes has committed to that, and we'll be going around and asking everyone if they can commit to that as well. So, we also have the Kid Zone. We're going to be putting that in the chain link softball area this time and ticketing that, but for a very small fee. And then the dentists are helping sponsor that, and so the way we're helping generate more revenue is to allow them to sponsor it and then give away free tickets at their place of business. So, now you can go to the orthodontist's office, visit it, and get a free ticket to go into the bouncers and save $3, or you can just come and pay $3. And so, it's still within the parameters of making a family-friendly event that doesn't cost an arm and a leg, but we're trying to, you know, generate a little bit of income to help offset the cost of these events as we reduce the budget on that. So, let's see. So we have a community stage, lots of great bands, folklorio dancers, Hispanic culture mixed in with some, I believe, how do they label themselves, southern rock? Is that good? That might be good? Okay. So we're mixing it up a little bit. Of course, we'll have the cantina and tequila tasting, and our business vendors will be very happy to know that they will be all up on the field this year and not in the peripheral, maybe parking lot areas. And so, we're going to encourage everybody to come on out to that, and hopefully everybody will be in a close proximity. So, we're listening, we're getting everybody involved, bringing community groups in, and so the stage will be mixed with community dancers as well as the bands and that kind of thing. So as sponsors go, so far, we have Frito-Lay, which is always a big relief. Brenda knows. We love it when they say yes, and so they do that as a community service project from their plant. And so, those chips actually are coming from a different plant for the corn chips. So, as you know, Ochpin Community produces the potatoes that make the chips that are made here locally, but for salsa festival, we can't use potato chips, and so we have to use salsa chips. And so, so that's one of our plans. Century Link, we are proud to say, has once again come to the table as our title sponsor, and they are so excited to be here, and they really are going to be showing up at some events, and they really want to have a hand in our community. And so, New Ones, Ultra Star Multi Entertainment Center is coming to the table this time. They're working on a deal between the Southern Dunes, Harrah's, and Ultra Star as part of a Ochpin Community package. And so, those are things that we're working on right now, and, you know, you can keep those things in your mind knowing that as we move forward. New vendor to the table is Papa Murphy's. They're bringing a semi-trailer and selling pizza and having a big marketing presence for the first time as a new business in our community. And then, of course, we have our Standards Premier Orthodontics, and of course, Orbital Communications is producing television commercials, but with their expanded network leading up to the Sun Lakes area, we will now have television commercials in the Sun Lakes, Sunbird communities. So, does anyone have any question? You can't have questions at this time, so, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Call to the public. Eric?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, city council members, and our esteemed city officials. My name is Eric Lottch. I am the founder and executive director of Maricopa Business Council, and I just wanted to touch base a little bit on what we are and what we're doing in the community. Maricopa Business Council is a nonprofit organization that is focused on creating an environment where our civic leaders, businesses, and community can collaborate to build a strong and local, a strong thriving local economy. Recently, in January, I met with Mike Miranda of our Economic Development Department to see where we could fit in as a new organization, to find out where the city could utilize us. Two of the key areas that were made apparent to me in that conversation were the shop-local program and the impact that that would have on our economy here, and local education. We are currently working on the two key areas in a way to impact Maricopa that will both stimulate the local economy and support our local educational system. Projects that we have in the works right now, we are bringing cash mob marketing to Maricopa. Simply put, that's where you, we would get people together at a local small business at a specified time. They come in with simply $20 in cash money, no credit cards, no debit cards, and it's an infusion into, it's an infusion into the local economy for that business. Our first cash mob is going to take place on March 2nd. It's a Saturday. It's going to happen from 10:30 in the morning until noon. Honey Cut Coffee is going to be our first location that we're going to cash mob, and in the process, we're going to be meeting with several other of the businesses within that plaza to try and create more of a plaza-wide event so that everybody can take part in it. Another thing that we are working on is Home-Based Business Summit. After going through the numbers of the businesses that are currently licensed in the city of Maricopa, we realized that close to 80% of the businesses are home-based. And the tough part is, a lot of these businesses don't know the resources that are available that the city produces, that are available through the county and such. So, we are putting together a Home-Based Business Summit for April 27th. The idea behind it is to give everybody a chance to grow their businesses, or even for people that are interested in starting businesses. Some of the workshops we've got planned for that day include Basics of Business Startup, which will include business planning, marketing, networking, and business promotion on a local level, taxes and licensing, and that includes the TPT tax and local licensing requirements, teamwork and resources for success. We're currently working with NASAT. I know they were here last council session. Both Tom Baxter and Rush Yelton have reached out to take part in this with us and bring their resources together with ours so that we can have a great event. We are also working with Central Arizona College to nail down a facility to put this in, and the hope is that we have it at their new facility. And currently, we're working with NASAT, we're working with Arizona Commerce Authority, and Central Arizona College to bring this about. Another thing we are doing that I'd love to have everybody come out to is, we started a brunch club, which actually starts this Thursday. It's open to the public at Honey Cut Coffee, first and third Thursdays. It'll be 10:30 in the morning to 11:30, and the public is invited, and the only thing we ask is that you bring $10 cash. Don't use a credit card or debit card. That way we can, it's another way to just keep money coming into those businesses. And our goal with the brunch club is to, every couple of months, move it around to a new location, a new independent business in the community so that we can help infuse them. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Call to the public. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and move on. Move on to the minutes here. Before we ask for approval to the minutes, Dennis, did we need to make a change to those minutes? Do they need to be verbal based? And we were talking about the task force that we dissolved on the zoning code rewrite.
You know, I think you're, did the change get into the minutes?
Do you want to make them now? We can make them now?
Let's make them now.
Okay.
Just to briefly counsel, one of the things that I erroneously did in, as we were trying to create the zoning code rewrite task force, it was actually agendized as a citizen council task, is that right? Citizen task force. And so, the council gives that approval. I had created erroneously a three-member task force of the council, and so when it came time to agendize this, you know, from meeting, we had two different task forces trying to do the same thing. So what we've done is basically just dissolve that task force as it was never agendized, but the citizen task force was. So we want to reflect that in the minutes and just dissolve the council one altogether.
Mayor, you're proposing-
Correct. So do I need to make a motion on that proposal? So, can I motion to make that change in the minutes on the regular city council session?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, move to approve the minutes with the amendment.
Okay. So we have a motion, can I have a second? Or do we need to close out the motion, the first motion first?
Hold on.
What did they do? Earlier? Okay, so how do we need to go about correcting this then?
So those meetings- They're not agendaed, Mr. Mayor, so we'd have to, we could-
So we bring it back to the next one then?
Right.
And go back and correct those particular minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Resend the motions.
Okay, so we're just going to approve the minutes as is then?
Yes.
Okay, so apologize, but that's what, that'll be, that'll be for the next time then, to fix those minutes. Thank you. Then a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings on section eight, we have no public hearings tonight. Moving on to consent agenda, now have a motion to approve consent, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, that brings us to the regular session, the regular agenda. Item 10.1, the mayor and city council shall discuss and possibly take action on appointing one citizen to fill the vacancy on the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Committee. This is for discussion action. This happens to be my appointment, and so going through the pool of applicants, I have selected Diane Morrow. So Diane is in the back. Would you like to stand up, Diane? That's Diane. Appreciate your being here tonight. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve, but as it stands, this is a council decision, so I send forth my person that I'd like to see, but leave it to you. So if you'd like to see that happen, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I approve Diane Morrow, as of the hour.
Okay, so motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 10.2, we will now hear and discuss possibly take action on appointing one citizen to fill the vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is Councilwoman Gussi's appointment.
Yes, there was three applicants, and I have selected Ms. Linda Huggins, and she is also in the audience today. And would you like to stand?
So that's the selection. Can we have a motion to approve Ms. Linda Huggins?
So moved.
A motion, can I have a second, please? Second, so motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you to both of you. Item 10.3, we're now going to discuss and take action to approve a contract amendment for the Guaranteed Maximum Price, number four, with Hayden Building Corp. for design, build, construction services in an amount not to exceed $14,318,743 for Regional Park Sports Complex. The funding for the project will be drawn from the budget line items, Parks and Bond, Facilities, and improvements other than building sports complex, county road tax, street project capital, sports complex, and transportation diff. Street projects, capital, sports complex, discussion and action. It's all you, Brett.
Mayor Price, council members, thank you. Yes, this is the final guaranteed maximum price, by the way. It just took four. This is the biggest of the four. It's for the balance of the park improvements, obviously, which basically covers the visible features, you know, all the buildings, the concession stands, the restroom buildings, the Ramadas, the grass or turf, the hardscape areas, and then also the roadways, which is why you had two other funding sources. Bolin Road is diff-eligible, and then also the county road tax is for the other roadways, mostly State Route 347 work. So that's why you have the three funding sources, is because this one covers the roadways. Basically, what this totals out to for all GMPs is just over 21.4 million for the entire approximate 100-acre park, which includes all the infrastructure for the multi-gen facility as well. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions, council?
Questions.
No? Guess not?
Yes. Move to approve, item 10.3?
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And finally, item 10.4, council shall hear a legislative update including comments on proposed changes to the state's transaction privilege tax system by State Representative Adam Quasman. And just so you all know, Representative Steve Smith was also invited tonight, but was, I received information from him earlier today that he was still in committee and was not going to be leaving the state legislature until about 9:00 PM tonight, so would not make it. So glad you're here. I heard you were behind, in some accident or something.
It's very true, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. I am thrilled to be here, and I am proud to represent the city of Maricopa in the new Legislative District 11. I myself live in Pima County, and many a day do I look northward and think that this is the truly, the most prosperous future of any county in the state of Arizona. I really, I really have fallen in love with Penal County, the more time I get to spend up here, and I hope this is the first of many meetings I'll be able to address and answer your questions. I'm proud to be a representative. Steve, Representative Smith, gives his regrets, he was not able to make it, and essentially I have asked the mayor to come and speak with you all, and I would like to congratulate the mayor and thank him publicly for the amazing amount of work, diligent work, hours and hours and hours of work the mayor has been doing, and putting miles on his car, coming up and working with the legislature for the immense transactions, privilege tax, reform, simplification bill that's been going on at the legislature. It's becoming a, it was a hallmark of the executive, and there are real concerns with the bill. And I'm not here representing the governor, I'm not here representing the chair of the Ways and Means Committee, I'm here representing you. And we realize that this is going to alter the framework of the state of Arizona and alter the framework of the future of how the city of Maricopa is going to have to go about with its business, and there were, there still are a tremendous amount of concerns. And members of the audience, if I might, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just say that you have a superstar as your mayor. He really has, there's been about three or four coming up regularly and meeting, not only with me, but with the chair and with, and other members, to make sure that cities like Maricopa are made whole. And he led his voice, he was one of the few who braved a four-hour committee hearing last night, and let his voice known, and so the members of the council, Mr. Mayor, this, you were truly represented yesterday, even though the vote right now did not go the way the mayor advocated, the bill is not completed yet, anywhere close to where we completed, and I'll kind of start with a, with kind of an outline of where we are at. Right now, you, the city of Maricopa, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, you collect a certain amount of prime contracting dollars through the current TPT system. That system is going to change, we're going to, Arizona is one of the few states in the country that has the TPT collection system that it has, and it, with all, for all intents and purposes, is a mess. Tremendous amount of different districts, tremendous amount of points of collection, tremendous amounts of point of assessment, and confusing for many tax-paying businesses in the state. The governor has made it clear this year that she would like a priority, it to be a legislative priority for her to simplify the tax code. This will be the largest simplification of the transactions privilege tax in 20, about 20 years, and arguably one of the largest tax simplifications since statehood. I am proud to serve as the vice chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, so this tax does cross, it did cross my desk yesterday and will continue, I will continue to be an integral part of where that, where that, our final product comes. Before I take any of your questions about how it might affect you, I want you to know two major points that I, that I would like to address right now very publicly. While I supported this bill in committee, this bill has changed significantly in the last 36 hours. An amendment was made on how cities like Maricopa will be made whole, for ease, we'll call it the Meznard Amendment. We've changed it from a rev share, essentially a revenue share, we've changed that's usually based on population. Now, while Maricopa is one of the, was, you know, still is one of the fastest-growing states, or fastest-growing cities in the state, we understand that that might not be the best way to allocate revenue share in the current economic climate. So we've changed the way we are going to index your share back to the, back to the city, we've changed the indexing route, and we've changed the amount. The goal is to make you whole. The goal is to make cities like, that also I represent LD11 whole, like Oro Valley and Morana. If we do that, if we do that, we might not hit 100%, but we want to get you as close to 100% as humanly possible, and know, members of the, members of the, of the council, Mr. Mayor, that I am with you 100, I am with you guys 100% of the way. We have got to get there. There has to be a common ground to be formed, and thank you, thank you for inviting me today. So with that, I'll answer any of your questions.
Representative Quasman, you know, I appreciate it, boy, you give me such high praise, you can come back whenever you want. I appreciate it. But honestly, though, yesterday, I'll be the first to admit that, you know, you kind of, you kind of left a little downtrodden. We, I would say that I left a little bit, you know, having said my piece and been on record, but felt like we really didn't get very far. However, reading some of the articles in the different papers around the state today, I felt a little more enthused that we would be getting some additional help as the bill moves through process, even Representative Kavanaugh saying, is the chair of the appropriations committee, that should the city's concerns not be addressed, that he wouldn't even hear the bill, which would effectively kill it. And I think that the TPT reform is valid and good legislation, however, you're dealing with two parts that pertain to it, that really, in my opinion, shouldn't be in there, but they are, and so we're having to deal with it. And so, I guess I would be concerned, or the question I would pose to you is, where do you see this moving forward as we go through the process? Because it was a little depressing leaving last night and feeling like we got battered and didn't really get anywhere with some of our representatives.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, imagine not being able to have time for lunch and then going through that four-hour meeting, and then driving 45 minutes to where I live in Phoenix. So it was depressing on many fronts for me. But here's, here's where we're at. Right now, there is a legislative time limit for the House to hear bills, and, and so the committee was going to hear it, was going, the process will move quicker and then slow down. That's kind of where, that's kind of how the legislature works, and forgive me, members, I'm a freshman lawmaker, so it's, I'm learning just as many, many are about how the speed of such a piece of legislation will go through. But I also happen to sit on the appropriations committee, that's Mr. Kavanaugh's committee, so it's a money in, money out, and this has to go through, of course, appropriations to then get to the entire House. Here's where we're at. Right now, the Meznard Amendment that changed the revenue share, the revenue allocation calculus, the indexing, to help make cities like Maricopa whole, has just been, has just been brought in, there are aspects of the Meznard Amendment where there's, where there have been failures, and that is, for example, it's my understanding, Mr. Mayor, that you tax, that the city of Maricopa, not you, the city of Maricopa levies a tax above the standard rate for prime contracting. The Meznard Amendment does not address that issue. That would be a revenue loss for the city of Maricopa. Issues like that have to be addressed so that, because I, we don't want, the legis, no, every member of the legislature is also, you know, they live in a city, they live in a town, and, and many of us don't, not many of us live in the grand imperial state of Phoenix. And so, whereas, whereas Maricopa- state of Phoenix, and so, whereas, whereas Maricopa County might see benefit, I, I'm interested in the, in the, in the future prosperity of southern Arizona, and we need to ensure that, that cities like you are made whole. So it's going to be addressed, the, the, the way the Meznard Amendment is, is, has been laid out is a first step. We now go back to the Department of Revenue and the governor's office, where we will then hash out, okay, the cities have their numbers based on the Meznard Amendment, where are the cities going to be with the new indexing? And I'm sure we'll hear from your office shortly on that, probably by the end of the week or next week. Then we all go as a package, the stakeholders, so different cities, the members of the, of the Ways and Means Committee, myself, Ms. Lesko, Mr. Meznard, as well as Mr. Kavanaugh, now, because that's where the next committee has to go to. We have to then have another stakeholders' meeting to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Now, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, let's not pretend that everybody's going to walk out arm-in-arm linked and, and, you know, dancing outdoor. There's going to have to be some compromises made on all sides. If we can get to, to, and ultimately, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's, it's going to come down to whose math is right and whose math is wrong, and we know that, we know there's going to be some apples and oranges going on. Ultimately, I believe, in all honesty, the numbers are there to get it through the House, the numbers will be there to get through the House, so our goal is to make sure that if it's going to hurt the future, the future revenues of the city of Maricopa, we want to make sure that as much of their interests are put into the bill before it leaves our control in our chamber. After the House, it goes to the Senate. Where and how quickly it gets through the Senate is frankly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, anybody's guess. Not only do I not, you know, I don't have a tremendous historical and institutional knowledge of how, how that works, but because it's such a large piece of legislation, it's going to be one of, I would guess, my, my best guess is it will be one of the last bills signed before the end of the year, before we, we do the budget. Also, as a, as just a, on a political side, it will be a, it will be a hotly debated issue so that people who want other things in the budget, just as normal politics works, that will be a, it will be a bit of a political football. Now, I'm not saying that the future of the city is a political football, that hopefully we will fix as much of it as humanly possible when it's in our world, but I foresee it slowing down on the Senate side and having it, and I see passage through the Senate or stall in the Senate. You won't know that until perhaps a month from now, two months from now. But that's kind of where we're at today, it's kind of a quick, and then a slow, and then maybe a, and then, and then a hop up. But once it gets through the Senate, this will be signed by the governor, so we need to make sure we change it, fix it, improve it now.
Thank you, Councilor Brown.
Thank you for coming. I have two questions. First of all, will you explain us what the Meznard Amendment is?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, can I get my cheat sheet on my, on my desk to make sure it's completely explained correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, currently you receive, or the cities receive, 20% of a revenue share through prime contracting right now. That's what you receive on prime contracting. What we are going to do, because, because of the prime contracting now being swallowed up by the state, we are going to move a rev share through a 40%, we're going to increase from 20% to 40%, it's going to be put in, let's call it a bucket, with, with, that's going to be distributed based on construction growth, and that is, and that is not full cash value, but a limited cash value of new construction. How we find that number of limited cash value, I don't want to lie to you, I don't know, and I have a meeting with the Department of Revenue to figure out exactly what that means, because that, you know, that question might mean the difference of a tremendous amount of money for the city. Where does, what does limited mean? That's a, that is, that's an important aspect. We're going to increase that 20% to 40%, and it's, so it's, and it's distributed based on new growth and new construction. There's also a $40 million sourcing assessment that's going to start in the state of Arizona. And what that means is currently, let's say, a, a member, or, I'm sorry, a visitor comes into the state of Arizona, purchases a good at a grand, at the Grand Canyon, you know, at the Grand Canyon gift shop, but wants to ship it, let's, let's say it's a piece of pottery, wants to ship it back home. Right now, that's not charged tax. We are going to levy an assessment on that, on that for the first time in state history. So we're broadening the base, lowering the rates, and that source, and that will then be sourced back into population. So right now, you have, you're, you right now have retail that's shared with cities based on population, you have 40% on, on the, on the limited cash value of new construction, you have the $40 million of sourcing based on population, and then you have the rub that I've been avoiding until this very moment, which is the hotly debated issue of noncompliance of new construct, of prime contracting, that there is differentiation between what the League of Cities and Towns believes exists and, and the Department of Revenue exists, and that is, TPT, according to Department of Revenue, is, that is not paid right now, that is, that, that is, receipt's not turned in, a tax form not turned in, because it's on the honor of the prime contractor, and, and the assumption is that at, at, or about 31% of prime, of TPT receipts are not turned in as a noncompliance factor, that will now, will be taxed based on the, the point of sale aspect of the, of the TPT reform. This is ridiculously complicated, I am so sorry to member, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I might address the audience, just saying this is ridiculously complicated, I'm sorry to put you through this, imagine four hours of a committee hearing about this, and, and then you'll have a lot of fun. So, but it is the future of this city, and it's very important, and we have to understand that the goal is for the cities to be made whole in the new allocation basket. We think that even without the 31% noncompliance, we can make cities whole. So let me have this little basic example. Under the current TPT, let's say there's a contract for $100,000. That $100,000 contract price times 65%, which is what's able to be taxed, times 5% of the state rate, times 20% that goes into the city's shared revenues fund, is $650 going into the city of shared revenue. Under the new legislation with the Meznard Amendment, that same $100,000 contract price times 41%, which is the, the new rev share, the new rev share rate, that's the estimated materials, materials amount of the contract price, times 5% of the state rate, times 40% that goes into the city's shared revenue fund, is now $820 going into the city's shared revenue fund. So even if we think that there is 0% noncompliance, even though the Department of Revenue thinks it's 31%, we're going to assume 0% and zero extra dollars coming in from the sourcing tax, which the deal, which the Department of Revenue estimates at 100 million a year, the amount being shared with the cities is still more. That's the assumption, is that because we're finding it in a different place, we're increasing the rate, the revenue, the, I'm sorry, the percentage from 20 to 40%, for all intents and purposes, cities should be made whole. Now, here's the rub. If you're going to ask me right now, will cities be made whole?
The answer is no.
I don't know. No, the answer is not no. The answer is, I don't, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I think we need to see it. I think we need to see it, and that's where the concerns are going to come in, and that's why we're going to continue to work with the mayors of all, of many, of many cities, not just Maricopa. We're going to work around the clock to make sure that this is, that you are not steamrolled here. That is why I'm here right now. I wasn't sent here, I want to be here to show you that we care about, that, that Representative Smith and myself, we care about what happens to the future of Maricopa.
Well, we certainly appreciate that. It would appear that based on your description, there were several issues there that should have been broken out rather than voted into one bill. That's the way it sounds. The second question is, do you know which senator is driving this bill?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this would be a, a House bill, so the chair of the Ways and Means Committee has introduced the bill. There wouldn't be, I mean, there were many sponsors, but there isn't necessarily the same type of prime, prime sponsor on the Senate side, it doesn't work that way, it's not like it's a separate bill. It'd be one bill and then hops across the, the lawn to the Senate side.
I know, but is there any one senator that you're aware of, who's hot about this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, not that I know of, but that doesn't mean that there isn't one.
Thank you.
And to clarify, just, just a little bit more on what you were asking, Councilor Brown. I think Representative Lesko is the one who was asked by leadership to initially drop the bill.
Correct.
So there are co-sponsors, but she's, she's the, she's the chair of the Ways and Means, and she was asked to drop the bill. And Paul and I have met with her in trying to do our best to raise these issues, as well as presented a whole spreadsheet full of numbers and trying to do our best to argue numbers, and like you said, in a four-hour committee meeting, it's not the best place to argue a bunch of numbers, but we tried anyways. Other questions? Counsel, counsel?
Representative Quasman, thank you for being here tonight. What's the plan of who's going to monitor the noncompliance with the construction?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, right now, based on how the TPT is collected, the compliance is an, is an on-your-honor, I fill out a form, we're a contractor and we're going to have the, we should be taxed at this rate. By taxing at the point of sale, it's automatically taxed, so it's not, there, there has to be a monitor for the noncompliance, and that will actually be, the proving of whose numbers are right there will actually be known immediately. I mean, frankly, it should be known in the first month, because you'll find out what the noncompliance is, you know, annually divided by 12, if you, I mean, it should be around that correct number of, just, let's say, that every month has an average amount of, of, of noncompliance contracting. But then there's the question, of course, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's the, there's the, there's the question, of course, is, was it because the market's picking up, so there's more, so there's more commerce with, that would be a prime contracting, or is there, or is there not? So it's, it's a, it's going to be, my fear is that we're, we're going to have to prove a negative on this, and there will always be debate. So it's a, this is a tough issue, this is not, this is, it's hairy on all sides. However, I do have to say, contractors and, and business owners are going through, for lack of a better word, hell right now, trying to figure out forms for different places and different regions, if you're doing business in different counties and different towns, you're filling out a million different forms, and it's tough for the taxpayer. And the state of Arizona, the legislature doesn't just represent the cities, we also represent everybody in the cities. And we need to make the business climate, especially as states like California fall into a mired mess of a business climate, we need to make our tax system as simple as humanly possible and ensure that that, that simplification does not bankrupt the cities in the meantime, that are so important, especially growing cities like this one.
I have another question, I guess, that's been bugging me, is that, you know, we were arguing about the 31% in, in the council meeting, you know, at the same time, I guess my concern is that cities, cities, when we budget for things, we budget from the standpoint of the worst-case scenario. What scares the living tar out of me is that the Department of Revenue is budgeting on the best-case scenario. And so, you know, if, if it doesn't hit that mark or above, anything below is a loss. I mean, truthfully, i- if it doesn't come in at or, you know, at par, then, then everything that we're counting on is, is a loss, and so I guess, I guess that's something I really wanted to ask the committee yesterday, is, is, you're right, at, at the point that two months into this, we're going to know whose numbers are right, and I, and I don't doubt there's, there's stuff on both sides here. There's certainly people that, that don't comply, yet I would argue, also argue that there's a lot of builders in the state who are the big builders that are very reputable that do. So I guess, I guess my concern is, is that we're being asked to budget on a worst-case scenario, the, the state of Arizona is, is doing this on a best-case scenario, and I, I'm just fearful that we don't hit that par mark.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I hold a master's degree in economics, and this makes me nervous. So when we're doing the numbers, we, we are nervous. That said, let me allay your fears and assuage your fears, is that you should be made whole if, if the Department of Revenue is completely wrong on the, on the noncompliance factor, based on how the rev share indexing is going. And that is, that, that is what we want to see. I don't want to, when we worked, when I worked with Representative Meznard on this, and how we were going to find, figure out a way to do this, and members of the council, when, when the mayor and I were sitting down and honestly going, and how do we try to at least, you know, make sure that if this does happen, if this does go through and it's looking like it's going through, to mitigate any type of damage done to the cities? I want to live in a world where even if we were completely wrong in noncompliance, and it's not we, it's if the Department of Revenue was completely wrong on noncompliance, that you should still get to this point, and this should, the, the noncompliance should always be, should be gravy. I mean, that really, that's, that's what I'm hoping for. And frankly, with, what we have right now is, with the 40%, the increase of the rev share and the 40% on the cash value, that should do it. I mean, with, in, in, in certain very rural city, in very rural areas with no growth and no construction, and no new, and, and places like Douglas, Arizona, where you don't see, unfortunately, they're really on tough times, not, not just as a city budget, but as, as a private economy grows in, that can be, that can be a lot more difficult than a city like Maricopa with, with all the makings of a thriving economy.
I also wanted to kind of throw it back to staff in this, I mean, certainly, we've been working very closely with, you know, with, with the legislature on this as it's, as it's arisen, we've talked about this being a bill that the governor finds very important, but I kind of wanted to ask city managers up here distributing stuff, you know, kind of what she thought as, as it pertains to if the numbers don't play out, and kind of what the scenarios might end up being. I'll toss it to, to you, Brenda.
I'm the city manager. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At a really high level, just wanted to kind of give you and the public an idea of what kind of numbers that we're talking about. So what I just distributed to you is a quick spreadsheet that just shows, and I'm sorry that we don't have this on screen to show the public, but we'll certainly get this posted if, if we have the ability. Oh, we do have it, very good. Okay, so, what you see there on the top is what we currently receive. If you'll draw your attention to the gold bar, you'll see that our current revenues for the upcoming fiscal year are expected to be 6.765 million, and it would go on all the way out in the future years to 10 million. The second box in the handout that I gave you shows what the impact of the scenario is that is currently proposed, and you see what those revenues come down to be, anywhere from 3.8 going out to 4.467. So the final box at the bottom there shows you, and you can see it's highlighted in yellow, is that it shows you what the impact would be as far as a loss to the city's general fund, and you heard a presentation tonight, and we're going through the budget process right now, so it gives you an idea of what kind of impact that has. It is potentially devastating, we are looking at 8.6%, 9.1%, then 12.7%, all the way in the year 15, 16, which coincides with when we're, we have all these big projects the council has, has built through your vision and brought on board, to a 20.1% hit to our city. This is our general fund, this is what puts cops and firefighters out there for you, this is what ensures that you have streets and that you have all the different things, this is, you know, and planning staff to bring growth in, you know, so we as staff appreciate the opportunity to just present this to you, it is very complex, just at a high level, what we're, we are primed to grow, and growth is what has given us the ability to build the projects that our residents are now enjoying. If it is taken from us, we, this is not something we will ever grow out of. Prop 117 has put a cap on how much our property taxes can increase per year, so even as we grow, we're going to be limited by the amount that we can grow based on new construction and based on that growth that's limited by that new proposition. So we appreciate the opportunity to present, counsel and the public, with the true impact of this. We're going through the budget right now, and, and there's nothing that's off the table for us to try to, to address this. Now, we realize that it is projected to be a proposed phased-in process beginning in January 15. So could we put our heads in the sand and ignore it and wait for it to hit us then and worry about it then? You bet, we could, but that's not good fiscal management, and that's not what the council expects of your staff, and that's not what your staff is doing. We are bracing for impact, we are planning for the worst and hoping for the best. So it's encouraging to hear the representative tell us that we're going to be made whole, but as staff, I would respectfully request that if we are going to be made whole, that these numbers that we're showing you here are used- these numbers that we're showing you here are used in their calculations. And secondly, that those funds that are going to be made whole are not swept in future legislative action. Because our construction sales tax that we collect and have right here, we know the legislation, as it currently stands, can't take that from us. But if we get state shared revenue increases, that's great for thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen, sixteen, or sixteen, seventeen, but what about eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and so on? We need to think of the future. And so we would want some sort of reassurance that that, that that money won't be swept in future years. So those are a couple of things. I'm open to answering questions that you may have and staff as well.
Thank you. Um, I know that these, these are the numbers that I was speaking of, that I presented to the committee as well as to Representative Quasman, um, yesterday, as well as, uh, in our private meetings with, with Representative Lesko, et cetera. One of the things that, that was, we even mentioned this in my testimony yesterday, uh, was that we were looking for those guarantees, the, to keep them from being swept. Obviously, at this point in the game, we haven't received any of those and I think that will become incumbent upon us to, i.e. you, Representative Quasman, to certainly bring that up on our behalf moving forward in order to say, this is a piece that, that, again, we're willing to work with, but, but we need to have those assurances because, again, I just, I'm afraid that from what I heard yesterday by some of the representatives that they're not willing to sit down and talk about our numbers versus their numbers and let's meet in the middle. And that's what I'm afraid of because, like you said, it's going to be down to a match of, of numbers and it's either we're right or they're right. And if we're right, you can't take it back.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I could not agree with you more. And I, the reason why I'm here is because I'm scared about this. And that's, there are many representatives right now, let's just say, not making sure that they're meeting with their cities and towns because they know in their hearts that unless, that, that they can, that, I don't know how you can look at your city again that you pretend, that you purport to represent and look them in the face and look at the council members and look at the, and look at the citizens in the face and say, we didn't do everything in our humanly, in our possible power. This is not a gas tax sweep that you could say, oh, well, by the way, we needed the funds, state's bankrupt, so now, now we're okay. This is not that. This is twenty percent of your budget. And, and that, one of the first things I talked about after the meeting is when we talked about the phase-in, I don't know why there couldn't be language that says at least as good as X, especially for, as a part of the phase-in. Um, I don't know why there can't be language talked about that say, that says, that says under the, under the shared revenues, I mean, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if we, if we all agree that those numbers are correct, okay? If we're looking at, at the numbers, this is pre, I just want to make sure this is pre-Meznard Amendment numbers. So we all know that this is under, this, this is a nightmare scenario that we made sure that did not, that is not going to happen under the Meznard Amendment. So it's going to be, we know for a fact it's going to be, at, better than that, that doesn't mean whole. Those are two very different things and I want, and I want, um, the members, the members of the council to know that I know that that does not mean whole. So what we would like to do is let's sit down again. You, and, and Maricopa, um, if I might address, I might address the staff, and Maricopa did something that many cities didn't do. And that was in working with the legislature, when we said, let's see the numbers under, under the scheme that we want to, that we want to see them. So there's no excuse that, that those who are really pushing this bill through, um, there's no excuse to say, well, you haven't given us the numbers, therefore we don't need to listen to it. And I have to say to the mayor's credit, in the committee, in the four-hour committee hearing, you were, you were commended by the, by the, by the chair saying, you're one of the few people who gave us actual numbers and, and didn't fudge them. So, right now, under the, under the, uh, under the Meznard Amendment, let's go back to the drawing room, let's go back and redo this with what we think is going to happen if there is the thirty-one percent or if there's not thirty-one. And I want to see it really without the thirty-one percent of the, of the possible not, how do you know it's thirty-one? How do we know it's thirty-one percent if we know that they're cheating on the argument? That's, that's one of my, that's like saying that, that, uh, we talk about, we, somebody said at a, um, to talk about firearms real fast, somebody said at a, you know, forty percent of gun, of gun sales in America are illegal and not captured by the, how do you know that? How do you know if they're illegal and not captured or recorded? How do you know it's forty-one percent of it? It makes no sense. So, so, um, it's a, uh, so these numbers, we want to make sure, let's base, let's forget the thirty-one percent. If you can't be made anywhere close to whole, you know, we might not all get to a hundred percent, but let's get, let's, let's get so that the patient still survives at the end of the day. That's what we're looking for.
We will give you the numbers as, as to the Meznard Amendment here in the coming week, but I guess I have one last question. In my discussions today, uh, with some of our, our staff, one of the things that, that you'll see right at the top is the projection, single-family home permits. And overwhelmingly, that seemed to be what most cities were talking about as well as most members of the committee were talking about yesterday. However, one of the things I, I guess that you get so focused on this, and I think the committee was so focused on, you know, we stopped for a second to talk about growth and what growth really means. It doesn't always mean single-family homes, you know, or apartment complexes. It, it can mean, you know, thirty-story buildings and, and Tempe has it, has a different issue. I mean, they're not building a lot of homes in Tempe because they don't have any more space. So they're building up. And so, you know, that's something that's not even addressed in here. And I'd be interested to see, you know, if you have a thought on that and if not, you know, maybe where, where that goes. And I'm not arguing for Tempe, I'm just saying that we were so focused on houses and growth, we weren't even talking about what that means for, you know, the loss of a, what is a thirty million dollar building, you know, at construction sales tax versus, you know, point of sale for that thirty million dollar building.
Another aspect, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is that, you know, people are assuming that we're going to get, that cities are going to receive funds from their retail aspect to it. But if we don't have a Lowe's, if we don't have a Home Depot, if we don't have a lumberyard, you're not going to see that sales. You're not going to see those sales. And that's, and that's important aspect that this hurts, that, I am not, I did not come to the legislature to lose my cities. I didn't. And, you know, and that's why I'm here. And so it's, you know, you guys hear from like the big, the big, whether it's the, the Corporation Commission ready to raise your water rates or somebody, somebody coming from out in, in the suit saying, this is going to happen no matter what, Bob, you know, the big bad wolf here. I'm coming so that, I'm, I'm requesting the job to be the lawyer, to be your advocate up there. This is why I'm here, um, because I do think this bill is going to go through. I do. I don't think I could stop it. I'm a freshman lawmaker. I, the, you know, the people, I'm, I'm proud to represent everybody, but I'm a freshman lawmaker. I can't, I don't have a coalition of, of thirty people behind me. You know, the speaker has a coalition of thirty people behind him. You know, the, the, the governor has a coalition of more than that on both sides. So here's what I, here's what I promise I could make, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the staff, everybody in the audience, here's what I can make. I'm going to work with you guys, let's get you as, as whole as humanly possible. Is this going to hurt? Probably. Probably going to hurt, I'm not going to lie to you. But let's make it sure that you don't get, you don't get killed over it. Let's not, try to make you as whole as humanly possible or else we can't support the bill. And it's not just me, it's other major members feel exactly the same way. I can speak for Steve Smith in saying, we feel exactly the same way about this. Tax simplification is important for the state. It should be important for the city, but it should not be coming at the cost of the death of what made this state great in some of the best urban areas and some of the best cities. And where you got, where, where the city of Maricopa has been nothing but successful. I don't want to punish that success. So that's why I'm here. I, I am, I am proud to represent this city and, and represent parts of Pinal County and parts of Pima County. It's, it's very, it's, it's, this is a great job and I don't take it lightly. And this is the beginning. This is not the end. This is not a done deal, nothing here. We've already changed, think about this, we've already changed this entire framework of how you're going to be made whole in twenty-four hours. So this is still a lump of clay that we're forming. And, and I want to thank you again for being, helping me form it in the right way for the best interest of the, of the people of Maricopa.
Any other questions, counsel?
Mayor.
Councilman.
It seems like the likelihood of guarantees is, um, gone, none, right? If it were, just, just to say a word, just to entertain that thought, what, what would the, would, would the legislator have the opportunity to undo the guarantee, a future legislator? Or would, or is there a lock, lock in place where it were, it would be firm enough not to break even?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't trust those people and you shouldn't either. I just tried to put a spending limit today and I was considered a crazy person because I tried to write a bill that says that this state shouldn't spend more than it took in last year plus population growth plus inflation. So I think we all need, when we go home and we balance our budgets, oh, in case of emergency, and there are emergency aspects to it. So in case there is a fire and there is something that we have a state emergency for, we, uh, we, we do have the opportunity to fund that. But when we go home, that's how we budget in our kitchen, in our kitchens. We have, here's what we have coming in, probably shouldn't budget more than that. So that's, that's considered controversial at the state. I'm fighting alongside you, pro-, I promise you. I really do promise you that. That's my guarantee that I'm not going to take away from you.
Mayor, um, I was able to sit in on the committee meeting, um, three weeks ago, the introducing meeting, uh, Ways and Means. And I want to thank you for bringing up the topics that were important because it seemed like, of course, the testimonies from the governor and small businesses. And I agree that it's a quagmire of a system that Arizona has, there's no doubt about it, but I, I, I think it was more lopsided testimony and, and on purpose, I understand it was the governor's representation of what needs to be done. But I want to thank you for bringing the, the concerns that we have as a city and other rural, uh, areas of that it being lopsided and, and we're pro-business, we're talking about economic development a lot, but at the same time, it shouldn't be anti-city, local city government. So the, the concern I have, and, and I thank you for your, your fight going through this because I agree with you, it shouldn't be all or nothing, um, and that we should be made whole as much as possible. So I, I want to thank you again for, for that. And that's been my concern and just observation, just my, my short time here on council is that state legislator does not hear what we locally have as concerns. So thank you so much for, for doing what you're doing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if I just on a couple of other points that are not TPT related.
Absolutely.
I would like to ask the permission of the mayor and the council to be able to help advocate on behalf of the people of Maricopa in their global water dispute with the Corporation Commission. I feel that a, a raise in rates on the people is, at a time of recession, is disgraceful and I'd be proud to represent you in any way I see, uh, in what you see fit for me to have the most effective role on behalf of the, of, of the city. Furthermore, um, I would like you to know that my office is absolutely available to anybody here, whether you would like to come as, in your official capacity or anybody here who would like to come in a non-official capacity and see what actually goes on in the legislature. It's actually kind of fun, spend a half a day with me. Um, if you, you'd like to email, email me, um, come up, it's, it's not that far, come up in the morning, see where we are. We have usually session at one-thirty in the afternoon. Um, I'll introduce you from the house, from the House floor, so your name is in the permanent record in Arizona, in Arizona's history, and come and see, uh, and see the legislative process firsthand because this is the people's house, so.
Any other questions? Councilman Gussi.
Thank you for letting yourself involve this fight, the TPT and global. Representative Smith wrote an editorial about the Bultsy sponsoring and indicated that immigration and tenant notifications were his priorities. In short couple of sentences, what are your priorities?
Stop Obama, Mr. Mayor, members of the, of the council, to stop Obamacare in Arizona at all costs. It will bankrupt this state and it will trap individuals into a, uh, into a subpar health system. Um, the governor has looked at a, a major expansion under Obamacare, which we knew in two thousand nine as the Cornhusker Kickback, and it's a raw deal. That's first of all. Secondly, tax, continue to lower taxes and continue to, and, and rein in state spending. That's, that's, it's the big issues and the big ideas are worth fighting for too. You know, we do a lot of the small stuff, but the big, but the big principles of limited government, low taxes, no special carve-outs, broad-based reforms for, so that everybody has a chance to prosper. Prosperity is the name of the game and that's what I intend to do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Uh, just, one of the things that I know that, that we have wanted to do as a council is to have our supervisors, our representative, our senators here on a more regular basis, uh, hopefully quarterly and, you know, to give us these updates and, especially as the legislature is in session, uh, but what they're working on and what they're trying to accomplish.